The business.
And I own the business too.
But how long has it been since you were on prostitution license?
Um, probably about, I don't know, usually go for six, seven years.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, um, the file we do have is for year of new fill-ups. So there would be a separate file for Linda. But, but again, going back to what Dana Robinson said, the background checks have to be current.
Right. So it's, uh, what's the pleasure with the board on this time?
I like to see them stay open, but it's the fact that the matter is that we need that permit. We need the background check. I don't know how we get done as quick as possible, but you need the interim. You're related to your business license. The background checks, I don't even know. I'm sitting in business always trying to figure out a solution, but I don't think it's a simple solution. I think it's gotta be expedited in some way. I'm not sure how you can do that. The sheriff's office does the background check normally, or do you?
No, we send that off to Carson City.
Carson City? Well, that just, uh, that just ties your hands. I don't know how we can get around that.
There is the option of temporarily suspending the business license, but that may have the same effect.
Pardon me?
There is the option of temporarily suspending the business license, but that may have the same effect that they're, they have concerns about.
So does the background check have to go with the, with a liquor license or just prostitution license?
I think there's a separate one, yeah.
I, I think that this is a very messy situation and especially with you all having been business owners in the past and you know what the rules are to things like that, but it's been wanted. So for me, um, I, I think the closest guess that I would give would be suspending it rather than taking away.
But this license is, is one that would have to be going away anyway.
Right, if there's gonna be a change in that.
And suspending the license means they could be making business under that licensing.
Right.
So they can't.
No, they shouldn't be making business.
I mean, I think the best the city could offer is that we will do everything possible to make sure that your applications, whether it's for liquor license or prostitution license or file, are processed as quickly as we can, but.
What can you do at the sheriff's office? Is there any way to change that so you can get a locally? I don't know why, why are you sending that to Carson City anyway? If you have a local sheriff's that you use?
I believe the sheriff's office also sent that down.
Yeah, oh, you do?
They, everybody sends it out. It goes to the department.
Oh, okay, so my last employer was a DPS officer. If I contacted my last employer who ran a background check on me, could, and he's a DPS officer, could I see if he could talk to you guys and expedite it somehow, if there's some way to go over it?
I mean, it's been, as far as I understand, it's been sent to him. It's, it's in, in the queue.
Okay.
We'll get it back when we get that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do the clarification.
I'll move to temporarily suspend the license this time.
I have a motion from Councilman Carson to suspend the license. Does such means as the new license is in place or the current license is correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Second from Councilman Oliver. Any further discussion from Council?
I have a question. How does it get corrected? I didn't hear any, uh, any conversation about what he does to correct the situation.
It's the same process here going forward.
Okay, that's right, okay.
Well, that'd be about eighteen months, we're all closed.
So is there any further discussion from Councilman Oliver? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here it is ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. The mayor will reconvene in the regular city council meeting on nine eight. Uh, the mayor will recess the rate. I'll look at the meeting. The mayor will recess the regular city council meeting for a public hearing at five thirty PM on the following topic. Item one, council member city building official Peterson. Public hearing discussion only, approval of second reading ordinance seven four six. Bill twenty twenty-two dash zero two, proposed ordinance updating amendment five nine of the E D City Code, thereby adopting operative building standards. Adopting codes for residential plumbing, electrical mechanical energy conservation, oxide modular, and prefabrication construction, and providing other matters properly related on their. This is the public hearing, so if they come on this side of the hearing topic on the, uh, the public.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, under your nine dash one dash toll building official goodies, you guys are saying one thing, yet you're allowing others. You're not consistent with the rules and your regulations. Some of your records, we say the building official shall keep comprehensive records, inspections made, reports rendered, notices and orders. My building five seven is still leaking. Your building inspector took my money. Your building inspector said I hired a floor contractor. Might have complained to you folks, he says F U U F N T. That doesn't stand for bark, pink, fun, and dance. You guys didn't do anything. When you, when you take a citizen's money and are concerned about nine dash one dash six, not my ability in the city? You folks take our money. You folks tell us it's a lot of protection. And then when something goes awry because your employee failed to do due diligence, F U U F N T. That's how I would kind of say it. If you're gonna do this, then the city has a liability. I lost my roof, fixed. I want the brick put back on my building. And I don't wanna hear a building inspector tell me, oh, you hired a floor contractor. At any point, you should have shut the job down. I was not in any condition to get on my roof to check on the contractor. And then I have to get on top of it, like some jerk, that I had to pay for.
Mr. Chetis, do you have some comments on the adoption of code?
Yeah, I, I, I want my ability on behalf of the city. When you take money from the taxpayer, from a citizen, you can't leave him out and let feel. You have an obligation. That inspector supposedly does due diligence. They haven't. I've turned in buildings, asked for permits, and all I get is nothing found. Well, if I turn a specific address in and they're doing construction, and you people, your staff tells me there's no record, someone better get off their dead horse and make sure that his pay hasn't happened. Hasn't happened. You people need to do your due diligence, and there's got to be liability on the city. There's no protection for the citizens whatsoever. That's what concerns me. I'm not afraid of regulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chetis. Any other comments on this public hearing topic? Please.
Just for the record, I've been here for eight months now. The interactions that the gentleman, Al Conant, was speaking of was allegedly with my predecessor. He has repeatedly brought up the building inspector, has called him this, the building inspector has called him that. And I can assure you that as of today, I have not called him any of those names. So just clarification for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Anything else?
Certainly, both of you are on this topic, so is, uh, the ones to be discussing, certainly possible questions?
None other than this topic. On the following topic, if you can read. On the following item, further discussion as well. If there's no, no other comments during this public hearing, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item nine, discussion possible action. Items for taking to the public hearing. Item one, council member city building official Peterson, discussion for possible action, approval of second reading ordinance seven four six, bill twenty twenty-two dash zero two, proposed ordinance updating amendment five nine of the E D City Code, thereby adopting operative building standards, adopting quotes for residential plumbing, electrical mechanical energy conservation, and oxide modular, and prefabrication construction, and providing other matters, providing other matters properly relating their.
So if I may just speak to Mr. Travis's comment about the normal ability of the city. That provision, um, this, this ordinance is sort of a mirror of the county. They have the same provision. And all it does is, is it, um, it wages liability on the city to any damages to a person or property caused by defects in workmanship, uh, for which a permit has been issued. So a permit is issued, if I'm understanding correctly, um, it's not, uh, if, if the building official or whoever's issuing the permit misses anything, a defect or anything, the city's not liable for that. So that's all it does. And really, under, under that law, the city has sovereign immunity anyway.
You need to do one step better or don't collect.
So the city has sovereign immunity anyway. This is just a provision, sort of more like, more like the statute.
Mr. Peterson, is there anything you wanna add on this item?
Uh, no, I'll answer your question.
I'll just say one more thing, but, um, the suggestions of Councilman Speer to change some of those grammatical errors from the last reading have been changed in this, in this reading.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions from the council on this?
I'd just like that, Mr. Mayor, that chapter eight, the oxide modular and prefabrication destruction code, that much needed this time of the year. This is a new world. This is happening all around the country. We just gotta get it over with, and I appreciate that effort to get that in there.
If there's nothing else, or anything, a motion on the side?
I'll make a motion to accept it, present it.
Motion from Councilman Oliver, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Carson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. I was, here it is ordered.
Uh, ten, items for discussion, possible action of the U S City Council as recommended by the municipal utility board. Item one, Councilman Oliver, uh, city attorney of the government. Discussion for possible action directs city code to publish notice of intention for supplemental action on past landfill accounts including rent fees and full penalties.
Utility board recommended approval this morning, and I'll let Mr. Councilman Oliver take it from there.
Hey, I, I just talked to the utility board with some of the figures we had on it. The staff broke out the lien fee, landfill penalty, total balance. So it would be really great if the attorney can go and get all the penalty over. Since in the past, like people have a concern or a sole property trying to buy it, the council and the board would either, you know, write off the penalty or whatever. There's a sense right now, the principle that's on the book right now for the lanes and the landfill, one hundred twenty-eight thousand five hundred ninety-three dollars. The penalty is two hundred eighty-nine thousand seven hundred fourteen dollars for a total of three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. We have fifteen customers out of the eighty-six that are over twenty-five hundred dollars in the total landfill and new fee. I've not counted the penalty. And there's seventy-one of them are under the twenty-five hundred dollars lien fee and landfill. So the thrust on this was to have the clerk, with our permission, approval, to put it in both newspapers and on social media, to let them know that the city is actively gonna pursue this. In my tour of duty as the city council, probably about two thousand and eight or nine, the city did take a family to court, and they were successful in getting that family to pay. The judge ruled in the favor of the city, and they paid. So I think this is a great effort. I, I think a lot of people, again, you know, there's seventy-one customers that are under twenty-five hundred dollars. So they'll have their day in court. The judge will be the final say, you know, charging for the penalties, lien fees and so forth. But the attorney will be tasked with challenging that payment to court. So I think it's, uh, get over, I don't counsel the sphere as, you know, write off any penalty. Two hundred eighty thousand is a lot of money. So if we can collect that, that's good, you know? So that's the idea of your, give the people a chance. Look at, because they get a monthly bill. That question was asked this morning by the utility board. They get a monthly bill. These people are four thousand dollars in the hole. They get a bill every month, and it tells them what they owe, so. So that's the idea of it.
Any other questions? All in favor, any motion on the side?
I'll move to approve.
Motion to approve from Councilman Carson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Speer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here it is ordered, item two, board members sitting here on board, discussion only. Update regarding E Lee, End Up Truck Wash Project water service.
There was a discussion this morning at the utility board on this, and none of the members at that time had any desire to pursue any after charges on this. And I'll probably let VJ take it from there on this scenario of this.
We've got the write-up in your packet, but just to summarize it, so End Up built a truck wash and a water truck fuel station down there in their backyard of their shop downtown. There used to be a truck wash gap out there, but that water was not containing any basic trend on the ditch and ran outside, so it's been closed for quite a few years. So this has come in, made some upgrades, so it takes care of that water, cleans that water, but doesn't just release it out to anywhere. And so as a part of that design, that process, they designed for an eight-inch stub coming into these new facilities with the anticipation when they were finding was already existing eight-inch. But during the construction, they actually opened up a ditch, did the construction, and then what they found was a four-inch line. And so they came to us, asked us what to do, and they wanted to go back and go to an eight-inch line back to the main. And so they did excavate back to the main. When they got to the main, they actually found an eight HT that had been reduced to a four-inch. So to allow them to continue to construct and to work with that, I told them, hey, go ahead and connect with an eight-inch grid on here, and I will bring it to council and everybody else. Kind of, I didn't feel comfortable just answering the question if they're being charged or anything else associated with this. And so I told them I would bring it on and find out if there was any desire of the council or anybody to, you know, look at any additional charges for them, upsizing or whatever, but it already was an eight-inch gap. This is a benefit to the city from the standpoint, they are creating a fuel station for their water trucks. Currently, we don't have a fuel station. So many contractors fill out of our fire hydrants with a backfill device on it. This will have a, uh, a backfill device, not only has a backfill device coming off the main, it also has an air gap at the top of the truck. So an air gap is a fail-proof safest way to prevent any back contamination. So that's truly a benefit for our system, because they're not going to be using our fire hydrants, which, you know, sometimes are difficult, and contractors should make some mistakes with them.
So is it gonna be used for a contract or is it just for end?
Yes, it was for End Up, and, and, and a part of their wash bay as well. And so that comes in as an eight-inch line, and then it splits with a six-inch going to their wash bay and six-inch going to their fuel station.
Any questions?
I went down, you know, that's actually a pretty good job, we got that all done, it was pretty good. Of course, I had that, you have eight inches of water, that's a lot of water. How many gallons a minute, I think, or two there?
Yeah, eight inches is a, is a big line. That's what they were designed for, but it does come up and actually split. So it's two, two sixes.
Is it heater?
It is heater.
Does it name its fire unit?
I believe it does name its fire.
Yeah, next question, first I do the discharge. That's gotta be a lot of salt.
Yeah, it, uh, they got their own little cleaning system involved in there, so what, what is released is actually a clean.
You know, with dump trucks, or it's not a lot of less salt it does come in, it's just.
Yes, and so they, that was something that had been shut down some years ago, because we were just cleaning that stuff, which is running down the ditch.
Which then biggest benefit was knowing the backup of spilling water.
Correct. Correct. No risk to our fire hydrant cleaning.
Any other questions?
I would just like to thank VJ for bringing this up on the floor. You know, it is a good question, and, um, it was something that needs to be discussed. Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, no problem, thank you guys.
Thank you. Uh, we'll move on to item eleven. Uh, items for discussion, possible action only of the U S City Council. We have the consent agenda. We have minutes from July fourteenth and bills from July twenty-eighth, July twenty-ninth, and August ninth.
I'd like to make a, make a few direction on the minutes.
Okay.
Right, under six, report. Councilman St. Angus, we used to have boats that would be floored in a brace. And then on, uh, eleven, under consent item, the, I didn't stay in from that two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars, and my daughter, my, my girls, I was asking daughters that, that I did say it's horrible. And then on the motion, it says that I'm staying from the July seventh, twenty-nine-two minute, but I actually didn't stay in from the bill. I have them, I think, I follow the pressure that I found, so I would move to approve the expression.
I would just like to discuss with Mr. Mayor, past member, D. Walter Fire Department, and some of the bills being paid, benefits, fire department, and along with Walter. And I'm longer, and I remember, I do support and favor those who supported the city, and I do.
I'll also make it explicit that my stocks as a member of the fire department, that's, I don't hold on, I don't understand. So is that a motion for the whole agenda?
Motion for the agenda, aye.
Yeah. And consent of bills?
Yeah, consent of the, that's it.
I got it.
Okay.
Motion from Councilman Speer, second from Councilman Oliver and Carter. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Here it is ordered. P one, Councilman Oliver, Councilman Oliver and Carter, discussion for possible action, consideration of a possible approval to increase pay for hourly employees up to an additional seven point five percent over the previously approved three percent increase in light of present economic hardships. Councilman Oliver, Councilman Oliver and Carter.
As we've discussed before, I think it's very important that we take care of our city employees. They are handling, uh, their responsibilities very well. And it is very important to us to, um, understand the economic hardships are hitting all of us. And the most important thing that we need is continuity. We have good people in place, and it's actually a loss if we can have an internal people. So I'm very much in favor of taking care of those people who can take care of us in the city.
And I'd just like that, also, I've stated numerous times that our working people, they're willing to make you or break you. If you don't treat them right, they seem mighty, they can come back. They don't take care of equipment, are people who do an outstanding job. You know, we sort of got into this snowball effect with the recent increases to the treasurer, the clerk, and the public works, their people, which they're all, you know, professional people, well warranted. But again, those guys got the money. Our people are struggling along with three percent, but I just think the best to give them another seven and a half. It will help them out with a hundred percent. I just think it's a good deal to do that, because once again, our employees, they're in the ditches, run the equipment, they'll either make you or break you, and they're dedicated.
I want to echo that, though, because it's, we've had a lot of employees throughout our lifetime, blood, eager, to maintain retention, and then hire and retrain. And this, this would give us what, ten and a half points for what we have. And that, that doesn't really keep up with the inflation today, so I, I totally agree. Turnover just kills us. You can't have that kind of turnover.
And closing, I also have the treasurer, she's, she'll have her, a pass to head her to watch the budget. You know, here it is, the first month of the year.
We're just helping.
Yeah, we just put a couple of big spikes right into two various account wages and benefits. So I encourage all the staff members to encourage the employees to help us watch our budgets. And I'm sure the treasurer will be probably on like, you know what? So once again, it's gonna be a group effort. If we all stay in this together, hopefully we won't go, we won't go down. Thank you.
Do you have something else? You know, I do, I agree with, with you three percent wholeheartedly, and, um, I just have, I do have some heartache with this, because this has been kind of handled wrong, in my opinion. This should have really went through the collective bargaining agreement with the union, so we had time to budget for this. I don't know how many times the, your councilman Oliver asks people, is this budget for? No, it's not, then no, you don't get it. So I do have a little bit of heartache. Now, I'm not saying these guys do not deserve it. I'm not saying it's style-oriented, I just think it was maybe a little bit of bad timing. And also on the, maybe the appointed official side or upper management, yes, they did get very big raises, you know, up in that ten percent, and I get it, but we also looked at the national average of that, and these folk were very underpaid as well. So is our main staff underpaid, that, by the national average? Do you know that? I don't know. Just food for thought, because I can guarantee you, next year, the appointed officials and upper management will be going, these guys are making right what I make, and are making even more in some cases. So I need an additional raise, because I run this department. Just food for thought, in my opinion.
Good.
Craig? H R Director Craig? This kind of gets on all the left of the room.
I, I appreciate that, and I know these guys have talked to me about the budget. I came up with, in my process, a couple of different things that we could possibly do. It is, yes, it's not budget for, you deserve it. Yeah, they do. So the two options that came to me that I was figuring, I had asked, I would put out there, is the possibility of maybe just doing the five percent now, with the possibility of negotiating in the next year, another possible raise, that we could get budgeted, even to it. Or if we do the seven and a half percent, with the understanding that come next year, we probably were just going to raise the contract up to whatever we have now, because this isn't a negotiation that I'm ordering now. We're just being, bringing it up to what it is now without another increase at least for next year.
Can the budget sustain this kind of wages without COVID funding?
Um, the options that I have for this is, there's appropriations and there are augmentations that I can do to the budget. And granted, it is early on, but yes, I do feel like either option, I feel at this time, that yes. I, I have planned places, just making sure it will go through the year for the state and homes.
To Councilman Carson's question, we're not using COVID.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. No, no, we're not using COVID for this, and it's, you know, the, our, whatever you want to call it, community service. It's not that money. That money is, as you guys have made very clear, it's to be set on.
If I can add to, Mr. Mayor, I had the treasurer, H R director, put the numbers together and using the seven, seven, seven that's a cent increase, and this is just the hourly people. The total wage increase, as the staff, the city in the ditch, you've done that. Increase in wages is forty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Benefit, which is a big plus for our employees, benefits mean so much, that's your, your purse. Addition of eighteen thousand forty dollars for a total of sixty-four thousand dollars for this seven point five increase for the hourly people. So again, that includes all the departments, including the road fund, which is the hardest one to manage. So.
Does that include the fire department too?
Yeah, that's the fire department, that, that sixty-four thousand dollars, yeah, the fire department out of that, out of that sixty-four is, uh, forty-three thousand. So, you know, they're a high percentage of them. So, you know, some people look at and say, sixty-four thousand dollars, that is a lot of money for the city.
It really is.
But again, I think, when she's got the plans, I don't know, we're gonna do this, you know, the appropriations and, you know, the way the revenue comes in, she's doing some augmentations. Again, this is the first part of the year, you know, so we wanna treat employees with everything. Yeah, like I said, I see Ed back there, he's a union man. And you gotta tell your coworkers that the city's pushing the limits right here. So, you know, if you see something happen to equipment, it's not working right, by gosh, shut it down. We can't afford breakdowns at this type of thing, you know? But again, we're all about the employees, and the treasurer did do the five percent increase, you know? The five percent is thirty-one, forty, forty-two thousand, or sixty-four. Twenty thousand dollars, it's not, it's a lot of money, but what's twenty thousand bucks, so.
So the, uh, the way the agenda items worded is the council can choose any amount, up to the seven point five. Having been tangentially related to some of the conversation on getting this to the agenda, I think it speaks a little bit too, to how quickly things have been changing in our country as far as finances and the economy, just from the time that we did the budgeting work to now. It, it's changed pretty quick.
Oh, yeah, so much baby Jen, right?
Right. And so that plays into it some, and just to bring us up, trying to get this closer on par with, I, I don't know what the average is on our side of the country for these kind of jobs, but certainly tries to bring us on par a little bit more with what other jobs you're going for here in our community, try to keep some of these employees and attract some employees to the organizations that we have. some employees to the other positions that we handle, and the fire department has just been fighting this for the last couple of years, trying to get people to put in any of the other positions too.
Yeah, also, state of current, I appreciate what you said, and I, you know, I thought the same, but the other thing too is, if we don't have it to give, we can't give it, it just so happens we can do it now, that doesn't mean that we can do it next year, and just because we did it this year, doesn't mean we have to do it next year, and that's not saying that we won't, but I understand what you're saying, you know, things must be finalized at some point, so I understand that too, but ever here, you know, we can't just keep doing what we don't have, but right now, it's just so important to keep intact what we have, but I think I just want you to know, I hear you, I'm there also, but, you know, it just doesn't mean that we have to do the same thing we did next year.
Right, and it's not that I'm against, I mean, I think.
And I don't feel that way.
Running better than it ever has, I think we have great employees, but, you know, it's also, I want to keep the efforts to watch the bills and make sure we can keep doing this, and it's a huge, it's a huge chunk, it's a great raise, and I don't want to give them, but, you know, to me, it's about recruitment and retention also, you know, do we need to sit down to the table and come up with, in five years, we're going to give you this, and you're going to do that, to encourage people to stay here and say, I'm going to stay here for thirty years, you know, if we find another fire chief after appetizers, wants to stay here, and after thirty years, I will be making this, yeah, it's a lot of money, but I stayed here for thirty years, I know the town, I know the people, I know the ins and outs, I mean, that's, that's something that I would like to see worked out too.
Are there any other comments, or is there a focus?
I'd like a motion to move forward with the seven and a half percent increase for the hourly employees.
A motion from Councilman Albert, go ahead, the second.
I'll second.
Second from Councilman Spear, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period, so ordered. Item two, Councilman Albert, discussion for possible action, direction to H R Director and the City Attorney to propose a plan and suggest amendments to the city code if needed to transition the public works supervisor position to the mayor appointed council approved director of public works. Plan and amendments to be brought back before the council for changes and approval.
So the way I understand this is red, we're, if we approve this, it's to get the attorney and the H R move forward to come up with the last, it's plan and amendments brought back, that's, that's what this is, to give them a little doki to put something together.
Other questions of the H R Director or our current public works supervisor on this? Anybody?
I just have since our reading to the twenty-fifth, we have until the meeting in September sometime or four back.
Okay. Like the second on September one twenty?
What do you think, Ken?
Well, I would prefer the second one because I.
Okay. Sorry, getting this covered, is that right?
Okay. Motion from Councilman Spear, second from Councilman Williams Harper, is there any further discussion?
I got a question, so if we do this, will he still be a working supervisor? How much has changed in the positions, or do we pull him out, and he's a non-working supervisor, and we'll watch over him?
These are things that they'll, again, come back, they'll never worry about.
But today, that could be kind of, we'd be discussing that with the information they have back with.
So I should be able to answer your question when we return on this.
How did that work when Mr. Freycraft took this position? Did we backfill your spot that you left out of, or?
Okay, any further questions? I've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Period, so ordered. We're going to take a five-minute reassessment before the presentation. Okay? It was a little desperate.
Put it out for a wonderful morning.
At the order, law, any invite?
Any special?
Mayor Robertson, Art Class, Art Rep. Discussion Only, White High Pump Storage Project Drive Losses Application in front of the company.
Councilmembers and city staff, I want to say thank you for the invitation, you're here. My name is Greg Colvin, I'm sure this is, my name is Greg Colvin, I'm the program manager for the White High Pump Storage Project. Was here a couple of months ago with a presentation, so just to tell you, I don't have any PowerPoints or video or anything that's in it, it's just a verbal update on where we're at in the last couple of months. We actually were here on the ninth of June, and there've been a number of things that happened since then. I want to focus on five different areas of updating. One is the geotechnical study and field technical exploration work, again, there's our, our discussion with the medical park services, and the third one is the current access road, status of that, and how do you launch testing and determine application? And the last is the, is the preparations for the, for the final license application that we submitted. So with regard to the geotechnical work, on, like I said, June ninth, we were here, and the following week, on the fifteenth, we actually conducted field checks of the geotechnical work plans that we had in place, that we had been developing for about four or five months. We did that with our contractors and with the End Up and with the B L M tenants. On the twenty-third, to the following week, we submitted a request to the B L M for what we call a work plan modification to the previously approved permit that we had for the geotechnical work. And we also were intensively looking at the results of the field survey that we did with, the field checks we did with our contractors. On the twenty-first of July, we received comments back from the B L M on the submitted request for the modification. Modification embodied a change to the access route that we had been working on, and that was, in fact, that was the extent of the modification, was the change in the access route. The B L M provided those comments on the twenty-fourth of July, and then requested additional information. About the same time, we had finished our analysis on the, the access route, our contractors were very concerned about safety of moving people back and forth to get a vocal, verbal, on a daily basis and delivery of equipment. They came up with a couple of alternative plans, those alternative plans, we didn't, we didn't believe were viable, and so we, we actually made the decision as a company to not move forward with the four oh three geotechnical work. So on the twenty-fifth of July, we actually notified our contractors that we were postponing four oh three geotechnical work for this year. On the twenty-ninth, we called the B L M to let them know that that was the case, and we were rescinding our modification request for the twenty-nine twenty permit. On August first, we notified the B L M in writing, and, and basically, we burned it back to the previous conditions that were in existence for the twenty-nine twenty permit that was in existence for the geotechnical work, which means that we'll be only doing the geotechnical work for four oh one for this year, and the trenching operations for seismic analysis. On August first, we also submitted for four oh two, we submitted a follow-up reclamation report that we submitted based on inspection we did for the four oh two site, and the four oh two site had to be receded and reclaimed, and we submitted that report on August first to the B L M. On August eleventh, which was just last week, we received a renewed permit for seismic work from the B L M, that seismic work will be done in, in September of this year.